Okay, this is the Baltimore City Council Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. We are here today for City Council Resolution 18-0075R, informational hearing, municipal broadband feasibility study. My name is Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District. I'm Chair of the Committee, joined to my left by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District,
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman John Bullock, member of the Committee from the 9th District, Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, member of the Committee, and then to my right, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Matt Peters, staff to the Committee, also joined by Rebecca Tab. We have Liam Davis representing Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, and we have Jeff Amoros representing Mayor Catherine Pugh. This resolution was introduced by Council President Young as a package of three resolutions in mid-2018. Before we begin, I'm going to turn it over to Liam Davis to provide brief introductory remarks on behalf of Council President Jack Young. One other -- oh, go ahead, Liam.
Okay. So again, I just have some opening remarks from the Council President, who unfortunately cannot join us tonight, but he wanted me to express these words. "Good evening, everyone. I would like to open tonight's hearing by thanking each of you for taking time out of your busy schedules to participate in this extremely important discussion, the future of broadband in Baltimore. The discussions and decisions of today help to pave the path towards Baltimore's future. It is my firm belief that a vibrant and equitable future for Baltimore will be heavily tied to the availability of open, reliable, and affordable Internet service for our residents. This past March, I introduced a series of resolutions with the goal of getting our municipal government to seriously focus on what we can do to improve broadband access here in Baltimore. In August, we held a hearing looking at the current status of our municipal conduit system. The discussion and testimony from that hearing was extremely helpful towards crafting pending legislation that will be focused on cleaning our conduit system and cutting down on unauthorized use of the system. My hope is that tonight's discussion and testimony will yield similar results. With BCIT's recently completed 2018 to 2023 inclusive digital transformation strategic plan, along with CTC's municipal broadband feasibility study, I am hopeful that Baltimore City can establish a clear path towards making reliable, affordable, and open broadband service more readily available to our residents, businesses, and institutions. More importantly, I am hopeful that these plans lead to tangible, measurable results. It is likely that this body will be calling future hearings to monitor the implementation of the recommendations established by the 2018-2023 inclusive digital transformation strategic plan and the municipal broadband feasibility study. Thank you, let's get this hearing started."
Thanks a lot, Liam. We have four agency reports. We're going to start off with Baltimore Development Corporation, Bill Cole. And folks, this is being streamed on Comcast Channel 25, as well as streamed online, so please be sure to speak into the microphone so the folks at home can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee. It's a privilege and honor to be here tonight, and thank you, Mr. Davis. Liam has been working on this issue now for a little bit of time. For me, it's 10 years. Some of you know I've attended a number of these hearings, chaired some when I was in that seat, having this same conversation. It's incredibly important for the city. It certainly is an economic development tool. Broadband and fiber should be part of every conversation we're having about the city's future. It affects our neighborhoods throughout the city and is a critical part of our city's growth, both in terms of jobs and neighborhood development. So Liam, thank you for continuing to push from the Council President's side. I will say that having participated in a number of the broadband initiatives that the city has tried, including the concepts of stepping up and creating our own authority and doing lots of other things, we actually have somebody in charge here at BCIT that has the ability to create the vision and put the people in the room to make some progress here. So I'm not going to steal Frank's thunder, but I am pleased with the direction that we're taking it, in addition to fixing the city's infrastructure, also focusing on what we can do to improve broadband for the city as a whole. So for me at BDC, this is an important issue because it's part of the conversation I have when I'm looking to attract and retain businesses. But as a Baltimore City resident, as somebody passionate about this issue, it's incredibly important as a quality of life issue as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, we have Department of Transportation. You have a favorable report. Do you have anything to add to that?
Specifically, no. We are in support of the municipal broadband throughout the city and the inter-agency collaboration required to make it happen. If we have any specific questions, our Chiefs of Conduit and IT are here.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Department of Finance.
Hello. Daniel Rawls, Operations Manager for BBMR. We are supportive of the feasibility study.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll turn it over to Frank Johnson, the city's CIO at BCIT. Frank, I understand you have a brief presentation, and then you have this lady with you, who's also going to be sharing some of your time. So if you could introduce her and then kick it off, please.
Thank you very much, Councilmen. Ladies and gentlemen, President Council Jack Young, I'm Frank Johnson with Baltimore City IT. I'm joined today by Joanne Hovis, who is the President of CTC. I'll introduce her and her firm in a little more detail in a moment. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you about our municipal broadband study that we have currently underway. It is not yet complete. Hope to deliver the final product, working in collaboration with Joanne and her firm sometime this spring. Just to put this in context, thank you again for mentioning, Liam, the city's first-ever digital transformation plan. You know, it outlines things like modernizing the city's infrastructure, improving public safety systems here in the city, smart city use cases like smart traffic, self-driving cars, a network of sensors, closing the digital divide through strategic use of technology. All of these things are critically dependent on a robust citywide network. And if you're following the, you know, the national dialogue on this, it's obvious that communities like ours cannot be solely dependent on industry to build, operate, and manage that capability for us. We need to take much more control of our communication destiny if we want to achieve everything outlined in this plan. It is absolutely critically important. So that said, what I'd like to do is just, you know, this is Slide 4, by the way, in your packet, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, Slide 3, right out of the digital inclusive, digital transformation inclusive plan, outlining the importance of fiber communication network citywide, not just in the parts of the city where it's available today. And in this plan, you know, it outlines the need for a citywide network, more fiber and broadband, especially to the underserved communities. You know, but we needed help with the next level of detail. Here in the city, we do not have the expertise in municipal broadband planning. You know, we needed to find the aforementioned experts to help us with that strategy planning. That's why we chose CTC. CTC is a firm based here in Maryland that is very well-known, nationally known, actually internationally known, and has helped advise, guide, and counsel many municipalities in their broadband journey. They are the author of plans from coast to coast. I've personally seen Joanne speak at many conferences on the subject, where she has sought out for her personal and her firm's opinion. They are actually the authors of many of the municipality broadband plans here in the state of Maryland, Howard County, Washington DC, the state of Maryland. So they're very, very familiar in this space. 100% of their business is state and local government. They are not consultants to the telecommunications industry. We and others like us are their customers. So needless to say, they are the trusted advisor in this space. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I'm now already speaking to Slide 7 in your packets, I believe. Slide 6, getting ahead of myself. So since we are working through the strategy, still not yet complete, what I wanted to do is have Joanne walk through where we are in that strategy and answer questions about what it is her and her firm are working in collaboration with us on for the next several moments, if that's okay. Joanne personally has been advising state and local governments for the better part of the last several decades, ever since the Internet was born. And again, it's a privilege and honor to work with her and her firm. So without further ado, Joanne.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Chairman, members of the Council, it's really, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here tonight, and it is also a pleasure and an honor to work with Frank and his colleagues on this very important project. And I'm delighted to be able to give you what I hope will be a useful update about what we're doing, some very preliminary findings of what we've found so far, and how we are starting to think about some of these issues. We are deep in the data collection and analysis part of this project. We've got substantial work and thinking and analysis, financial modeling, and so on, yet to do, but we look forward to delivering what will hopefully be an actionable and very useful master plan for the city's consideration as it considers how to engage the digital future. Let me start by talking very briefly about the project approach and the prioritization of the kinds of goals that we are working with based on our interactions with city staff across a wide range of agencies. We are particularly focused on the dual goals of economic opportunity and digital inclusion, and what digital infrastructure means for those goals. And from a prioritization standpoint, we start with the fact that we want to be sure to be able to achieve efficient and effective use of city assets and spending. We know that the city already has put real resources into developing assets and that those should be maximized and utilized to their absolute best outcome. Optimized and cost-effective city communications for internal purposes that will ideally utilize city assets where possible in order to realize cost savings, but also increased and improved operational outcomes. Third, economic development and the needs of businesses, in particular, small businesses, which are the entities that struggle most with connectivity, particularly affordable connectivity. If you are a large business, there will be a company that will bring services to you because you can afford to pay the kinds of amounts that they will require for that, including potentially their capital cost to bill to you. It is small businesses that struggle most to get affordable services, and in many cases, to get even adequate services. Fourth, and very importantly, we are developing strategies around supporting low-income residents of the city of Baltimore with the understanding that while there might be service available, that does not mean that decent service is affordable. And even where there exist certain kinds of private sector subsidy programs, those programs may be for very low bandwidth services rather than for the kinds of services that every family and every resident of the city of Baltimore should ideally have access to, regardless of their income level. And then finally, thinking more broadly, and very big picture, and with a long-term view, as we're building a long-term strategy that will be phased, we're thinking about the broader residential market, improving options, improving competition, and improving availability for that market. The specific tasks, and I'll be more brief on each of these slides now, but the specific tasks, let me start first with the fact that our engineering team has been working with BCIT and DOT around small cell planning in order to determine the appropriate processes, costs, documentation, and so on for use of city assets in cases where the wireless industry is seeking access to those city assets for deployment of wireless communications, which from the standpoint of delivering service to the public is a very good thing and has to be deployed with an eye toward also protecting public interests and protecting public assets. As part of this, we're also evaluating a smart pole strategy that is designed to maximize outcomes with regard to pole access. The next task that we have largely completed is looking at existing city services adequacy, gaps, et cetera, to understand the city's own internal communications, needs, and uses, and then also understanding the need of the broader anchor institution community. That would be large institutional anchors that are places where members of the community get broadband service, in many cases, and those of businesses. And we've done a number of meetings and interviews to this end. What we're finding, by the way, as we undertake this research, is a couple of different things. First, that those small businesses I talked about a moment ago that are struggling, in many cases, for affordable and adequate connectivity could potentially really benefit if the city is able to use its fiber assets to support them. But also that, and this will not come as any surprise, for many members of the community, in terms of home use of broadband Internet, they are struggling with affordability. Our engineering team is looking at the existing assets that the city already has deployed and owns specifically around fiber optic infrastructure, which is an area of particular strength, where the city has built up some pretty considerable assets to its credit. We're trying to understand where there are gaps and where it might be prudent to add additional fiber infrastructure to maximize the value of what already exists. And what we're finding is that those assets are there, they are valuable. They're underutilized and can be utilized more extensively. We'll make recommendations around that. And that in order to meet even just internal city needs and the needs of government entities with their large communications requirements, which are growing every year, in some cases exponentially, city assets can be utilized in very cost-effective ways. The engineers are also working on design and cost estimation tasks around understanding how expanding the existing fiber infrastructure could better support the needs of city users, of their government users, and anchor institutions. And we are looking at a range of different potential areas where the fiber could be deployed, including to economic development priority areas, low-income areas, public housing, and key business areas where there's currently very low levels of service. Our findings in this regard thus far are that in terms of any city investment in communications infrastructure, fiber optics are a prudent investment. They have been, it's been a sound investment for Baltimore thus far. And because fiber optics have a life of many decades, as opposed to wireless equipment, for example, which may only have a life of five to seven years, fiber is probably the optimal communications infrastructure investment for a public entity like a city. We are also finding and developing some recommendations around the ways that the city can partner with the private sector to enable and incent and encourage deployment of wireless communications, with a particular focus on making sure that there is equitable deployment to all areas of the city, and that low-income areas of the city get deployment as well, potentially through the city piloting some new technologies, including the what's called 5G or the emerging class, not yet quite here, but coming at some point in the near future, the emerging class of wireless technology that will hopefully serve all within Baltimore and not just some. Based on all of what we are learning and the data we are collecting, we are developing strategic guidance in a range of different areas, including, I'll just highlight a couple of these, digital inclusion with a focus on ensuring affordability and access in lower-income areas of the city. Governance considerations, that if the city steps into the space even more extensively than it has thus far, how will that be managed and what will oversight internally within the city and management look like? And then, of course, public-private collaboration strategies as we believe there are some prudent and important ways to work with the private sector toward these outcomes that are ideally win-win outcomes. The financial team is taking everything learned by the engineers and learned in our market analysis and building a business plan and a series of financial models around some of the strategies that we have been developing. And in particular, we will recommend funding strategies in that regard and what incentives to encourage private investment might look like and what public-private collaboration might look like from a financial standpoint. And then, all of this work, all of this analysis will be presented in the form of an extensive written master plan that will be a written document with text and considerable graphics and additional data included, including all the engineering, the financial modeling, and so on. And the goal is to provide to the city an actionable plan with clear goals, a clear strategy, and roadmap, a pathway to move forward that articulates both the opportunities and benefits, on the one hand, and the risks and challenges, on the other hand. And we anticipate providing that at some point in the spring.
Council, Committee, Council Chair, that is the end of our prepared remarks, unless you guys have any questions for us.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening. So the first question I have, it was in your report, but it technically might be a DOT question, which is you made reference to the fact that DOT's siting costs are so high and need to be recovered. And I was wondering if it would be possible, if not now, for us to get a more detailed description of why DOT's siting costs are so high? Because I thought I understood the process and what they go through, and it was not my understanding that what I think of as the more expensive and time-consuming parts of that process were being undertaken by DOT. I thought that DOT was basically handling pretty straightforward administrative aspects, and if there were problems, then the planning department gets stuck facilitating a very extensive community engagement process, which that I could see being expensive in terms of staff time.
I wish I could speak to the specifics of that work, but it was actually undertaken by my wireless engineering team, and that's their particular expertise. I will just say only, I hope I didn't suggest that the costs are so high as if to suggest that they're inappropriate, because that's not at all what we would --
No, and I didn't take it as such. I just took it as it, you were saying that we were spending a lot of staff overhead doing that part of it, and we needed to make sure we recouped it. And I just wanted to get a better understanding of, if it, could you have your wireless engineers send me like a little blurb of, you know, what they believe goes into it and why those costs seemed, you know, high enough to note?
Absolutely. And we will work with DOT and BCIT to make sure that we provide the information to be provided to you. That's no problem. I think also, I'll just say, based on my experience nationally, every community that makes note of where infrastructure goes will have costs associated with that process of overseeing it. And just given regulatory and legal change, there's just process involved in ensuring that that can be recovered, rather than --
My ears just perked up when you said it was high.
Thank you.
The next question, I think, is definitely for Frank, which is, would it be possible for us to get a map of our existing fiber assets?
Yeah, the answer is yes, we can make that available to you.
And I would like, if it could specifically show the dark fiber that the DAS providers are responsible for providing to the city every time they put up their antennas? They're supposed to be bringing strands of dark fiber that are for the city's use?
Yes, we've got that mapped out.
Okay, great. And then, the last question, I think, goes back to you. I was struck by the term "public interest 5G deployment", and I, it's like, that's a cool, that's a cool term. And I wanted to know, is that a cool term for free Wi-Fi? Or is that a cool term for us paying for the infrastructure for some provider who may be nonprofit, maybe for-profit?
It's not really either of those things. Wi-Fi's not really 5G. Wi-Fi is an existing technology. And I'm a big fan of free Wi-Fi. I think cities have made an incredible difference in the lives of their citizens by making the Internet available through Wi-Fi, which is very cost-effective, and making it available particularly to those who can't afford it. 5G is an emerging category of new technologies that is not here yet, but that's getting a whole lot of attention and hype. When we talk about public interest 5G, we are talking about ways in which we think that cities, and we're at the very early stages of this, it's an area of innovation, cities can work with the private sector. It might be the big wireless deployers, but it might be equipment manufacturers or small service providers in the community, or nonprofits who are interested in this area, work with the private sector to test out these new technologies, but to do it in a way that really has outcomes as far as digital inclusion goes. The greatest risk around 5G is that because it is going to be so expensive to deploy, and the equipment's going to be pricey, of course, we don't know yet what that is. The equipment hasn't been built or priced.
Of course, we're not sure what it's going to do, so...
Right, all yet to be determined, right? The hype is way ahead of the reality, but when it does emerge, there is a risk that it'll be so expensive to deploy that it will emerge only in wealthy neighborhoods or in select neighborhoods. We know for sure it's not going to rural areas because it's just so expensive to build that it's not economically viable. Many rural areas don't have 4G. In some cases, they don't have 3G. So that's the risk around 5G. And where we think that cities can have a real role is in trialing some of these technologies or enabling trial of these technologies in neighborhoods where the industry would not necessarily go first because there's not a return on investment for them, or the return on investment is lower. And so we are working with some strategies to suggest to the city around perhaps piloting use of certain kinds of 5G technologies to share bandwidth to low-income areas, to particular buildings, possibly to public housing, and so on. And these would be pilots, we're not necessarily talking about the city deploying infrastructure to tens of thousands of people, but testing, showing paths forward for how the technology can be used, hopefully, in cost-effective ways and in equitable ways.
Okay, all right, thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District, member of the Committee. Quick question, does the, is this study looking at leveraging some of the existing city public assets to implement a municipal broadband program?
Absolutely.
Yes, we're looking at the existing assets and seeing, based on how they can be used and the constraints around them, how can they be maximized to realize the policy outcomes here? That we're on that slide around prioritization. So how can those assets be maximized to improve internal city communications, to improve economic development outcomes, to enhance affordable service for low-income members of the community, and so on?
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Mr. Chair, if I might, I want to defer to Councilman Scott, and then I'll have questions afterward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you guys for being here, and thank you for all the work that you do. Start with a related, but more of a technical question. I know I walked in a little late, there was, I had a little bit of family things going on today. But you talked about making sure and ensuring that we get things out to all of our neighborhoods, including those that have been ignored. Can you guys talk to me about how you're planning to do this in an equitable fashion? But also, since you're not required to, has BCIT hired their equity coordinator yet? And where you are with that process of implementing that for this, but everything else that you do as well?
So on the first part of that question, the way the tasks that we have been given are structured is that low-income areas of the city where affordability of existing services is most challenging have been prioritized. And so many of the strategies we're developing are particularly focused on equitable outcomes to try to move the needle in terms of making service available to members of the community who can't afford to buy the better products that are out there, because they're really not available if they're not affordable. And that's the way in which it's being addressed. There, we are looking at what a comprehensive citywide solution looks like. That is a long-term and potentially very high-cost and high-risk strategy. So that is, I hope that addresses your question about how we're looking at the -- So, that is, I hope that addresses your question about how we're looking at the...
Yeah, kind of, but I would just add to remind you guys that under law, you can't just pick one thing to make it equitable. So, under the law that this council passed, you also will have to look at equity through race, but also income, because we know in Baltimore that in addition, in addition to income, but also gender, that they tend to showcase high levels of inequity. So, just to remind you guys of that. But then, I'm sorry, I know that the director wanted to chime in on the other portion. Yes, sir?
No, I was just making a note. There is a, going to be a broader implication of resources required to execute the strategy once the...
Sir, pull the mic up. I know, because I can hear you, but it's on TV.
The strategy's going to require some resourcing people and investment in order to start to execute the strategy, and an equitable advisor and other staff will be required to execute it once the strategy's complete. I was just making a note that equitable advisor, as part of that team, is part of the plan.
Yes, sir. So, you haven't, the department hasn't hired their equity coordinator yet at all?
No, sir.
Thank you. Second, second question for you guys, sorry, I was taking notes here. Second question, have you guys, are you considering, or have you considered a, the current conduit policy and potential recommendations when you're thinking about this and other projects?
So, our, our planning and strategy are designed to maximize all available city assets to this, to the extent that they can be utilized. For any detail on the conduit, I have to defer, I'm not the engineer on the team either, but we are looking at all assets that the city has as a tool for hopefully achieving some of these policy goals.
Sir, yes, sir. Go ahead, Director.
I was just going to note, for what it's worth, ladies and gentlemen, every step of this process, we've been collaborating deeply with Tavon Braxton and his team and the broader set of DOT behind the scenes. Every time we talk about our municipal broadband plan, they, we are absolutely working with them in a very collaborative and open way, a key part of this process.
So, does anybody from DOT want to chime in on that, or?
I can try, I'm sorry. Good evening, Council. I'm Tavon Braxton, I'm the Conduit Division Chief. I'm not sure which conduit policy you're referring to.
Just the overall, it's like how we deal with the conduit, the things that are in there, because when you're talking about what we're doing with municipal broadband, I think that we have to consider and utilize all the resources that we have, and I think it would be a huge mistake if we were not looking at this from a broader, from a broader perspective.
Well, we're definitely, we're working very intimately with BCIT in that regard. The, we have decided to leverage, you know, the use of the conduit system to maximize the broadband expansion, and we're, we're actually trying to implement ways to align, you know, our capital planning with that of CTC strategic planning for broadband expansion. It's already underway, it just hasn't been formalized, but we're doing it all the time.
And, and what, so this would include everything, including fees, correct? The fees that we charge for the conduit?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I know that's two I will acquiesce for, to Councilman Pink, and then I have some later ones after.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I can just kind of dovetail on Councilman Scott's last question, so, do we currently have a dig-wants policy related to broadband? Meaning, are we currently utilizing when projects require us going into the street, taking that as an opportunity to expand broadband?
So, from a conduit perspective, there are some limitations. Many times broadband expansion requires maybe conduit infrastructure where there is none. We're not exactly outfitted to build conduit infrastructure in that capacity. We're mostly to maintain the existing. Now, there are some occasions where, in rehabilitation of existing conduit, you can repair that by creating supplemental conduit that in turn becomes expansive conduit that's conducive for broadband expansion. However, we're looking at new ways and new legislation that will present revenue that can be appropriated to actual expansion of conduit. It hasn't been codified yet, but Mr. Liam, he's aware of it, it's underway.
So, not to belabor the point, but would that be a goal or aspiration to have that type of policy where we could, once we're digging to, for that to be an opportunity to...
Definitely. It's just that currently, the climate is that we're restricted and limited by the settlement agreement that we have with BGE and many of the other users.
Got it. I know that it was stated earlier that the actual plan won't be complete until spring of this year, but I'm just curious of some current, I guess, analysis of where we are. In a, in a, I guess, our previous Smart, Smarter City Plan, I noticed that one of the goals or strategies was to utilize new school construction to create, I guess, for lack of a better term, tech hubs that would be able to provide broadband access to a broader community. Are we currently pursuing that strategy, and has that been the case with the new schools? I think over this past year, two years, we probably opened up at least four new schools. And so, did those communities become tech hubs as a result of those schools opening?
I'm sorry, I really, I don't know the answer to that.
So, the city, was it 2015, 2015 created a Smarter City Task Force that yielded a Smarter City Report, which had several goals and strategies. And one of those strategies just happened to be to take advantage of this, you know, billion dollars in new school construction to create tech hubs in the communities so that communities that may not have access to broadband as a result of this new school construction would then have access. It sounds like that was not a goal or strategy that, that we continue to advance. And I'm not a techies, but it, it just seems like it was a wasted opportunity if we didn't take advantage of it. I don't, I'm just, I'm just asking. And I guess the broader question is, did we take the Smarter City goals and strategies and are they now, are we even using them?
Yeah, so look, you kind of, you kind of plug into it. So, I can't speak to the specific strategy that was developed in 2015, but I, if I'm understanding correctly, there are two potential elements of what that looks like based on your description. One is that when a new school is developed, is it possible to develop opportunity there for them to become a technology hub in the sense that it's a place where there's a lot of technology, where there's good funding, good wiring, good infrastructure, devices, and so on? And that, in my experience, is something that the school district would be working on, so it just hasn't been part of what we are. We are working on a broadband strategy as opposed to a strategy for availability of where members of the community can go to an anchor institution and get access to broadband devices, digital learning, and so on. But the focus of what we are doing around anchor institutions, I rushed through this before, but I said we are looking at ensuring that there's adequate and affordable bandwidth to anchor institutions, including public entities, and that may be through provision by the city itself over city fiber, in order for there to be enough broadband to places like libraries and other public institutions where members of the community congregate to use the Internet, to take technical courses, to take digital learning courses, to get access to laptops and computers that they may not have at home. So, the part of the strategy that we're building is the wires and the wireless pieces to connect all those folks in very cost-effective ways. Does that help to explain how it might dovetail?
If I can just read the, the strategy, it says, "Leverage the construction and major renovation of schools, recreation centers, libraries, and other public assets to create technology hubs that can serve the surrounding community's residents by directly providing Internet services at their home via Wi-Fi or at the facility at low or no cost." That calls for us to coordinate plans for the Baltimore City Public Schools' capital improvements with, at this time, Moet's fiber overbuild schedule. Incorporate other capital improvement plans, for example, those of the Enoch Pratt Library and Baltimore Development Corporation, and create master plan for developing technology hubs.
Okay. I think I understand the, that recommendation now. It's the idea that if there's bandwidth coming into a school or a library or another facility, that school or library facility would try to share it with the surrounding neighborhood so that folks in the neighborhood would have access.
Right.
So, there are a couple of complications around that. The first is that broadband to schools and libraries is very, very heavily subsidized by the federal government through what's called the E-Rate program of the Universal Service Fund. And in Baltimore, I believe the subsidy rate is 90 percent, so for every $10 that the schools are paying, the E-Rate program out of Washington is paying $90. The problem is that comes with considerable restrictions about how that bandwidth can be distributed. During the latter part of the last FCC, in the Obama administration, there was consideration of loosening the rules to allow bandwidth that is provided through E-Rate that's subsidized from Washington to be shared with the surrounding community. At the end of that administration, the issue had not yet been settled by the FCC, and the current FCC has not acted on it, and I don't think would act favorably on that. So, there's a political, regulatory complication, funding complication with respect to schools and libraries. With respect to the other institutions that you have referenced, then absolutely. The, the plan that we are developing is, how do we get bandwidth to the places where people who may not be able to access it at home can, can get it? So, for example, government buildings will have broadband infrastructure and will have Wi-Fi. Is it feasible to share the Wi-Fi with the surrounding neighborhood? But I want to be honest about how far Wi-Fi will go. If you think about Wi-Fi in your home, it may not go from one floor to another, from one side to another. So, we're not talking about extensively throughout the neighborhood, we're talking about more, like, very close by. There are other strategies for other technologies that can be mounted on roofs and so on, that can share bandwidth more widely. And when, we talked a little bit earlier about the equitable 5G strategy, that's along those lines, where we're thinking about if, for example, there's city fiber coming to a particular facility, can we use these technologies to then go rooftop to rooftop to another facility? Can we make it available to people in the neighborhood depending on how the technology works? And that's where we're thinking about these emerging wireless technologies that will go further than Wi-Fi will. So, I'm sorry I wasn't familiar with that specific recommendation, but to the extent we can, we are absolutely looking at those kinds of strategies.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Scott?
A follow-up to, to, my colleague is saying it, and if my memory serves me correct, I think that the issue with, Councilman, with that was actually on the school side, and the folks at the school system IT not, basically not thinking of anything that's not involved directly in the school is their, is not their responsibility or their problem. But because we have a lot of this going on, and also a lot of other construction going on, two questions. One, in this strategy that we're doing now, have, are you guys including city schools and their IT department? Because I think as we go into what we hope will be the second phase of 21st century, schools and building and renovating new schools, we know that this, we can't make the same mistake and not capitalize on that. So, are you guys including them in this current process? And if not, can we make that contact? Because I think it is critical for us to do that.
Yes, we absolutely can. I, you know, schools, it's different from state to state, but I've worked in a lot of communities around the country on these kinds of issues. For the most part, schools' governance and decision-making and financial decision-making is entirely separate to that of a city, even when they're partially funded by a city. So, it's not like saying, here, we've got two departments of the same city government, and we're going to work in close alignment. It doesn't work that way, and in fact, in some cases, it can't, as in what I just explained about the restrictions that schools and libraries in particular face because they have federal funding to support their broadband needs. But I very much appreciate the point, and I will make sure that we are in coordination, or we are at least reaching out and, to the greatest degree possible, making sure that our strategies align with those of the schools.
And so, I think that also, two things, I think that now with the director's boss, the mayor appointing the entire school board, they have to at least adhere and listen to some things that the administration says, so I will be, make sure that we remind them on that. But also, in a city like Baltimore where, listen, the school system, if we're going to truly have community schools and do things the right way, we all have to work together. And they can't say that, that, you know, we don't work for the city. Well, you know, pick and choose, because the city, we still pay benefits to retirees that are not technically city employees, and I think for something this big, we, I think that CEO Santalisis would be willing to come together to help us, because this ultimately erasing this digital divide helps them, because it allows for their students to learn more at home, it allows for more of their students to have access to things that they do not have access to. You know, and being a young man who basically only had access to the Internet when I was in school, we know how much that puts them behind, and I think that we should at least try to work with this administration, because it's, it's different folks that were in the school system back in 2015 when the, when the Smart Cities Task Force Report was put out. So, I think that that's critically important. And the second thing I was going to ask is actually along the same lines, there was another recommendation, and I had to pull it up. A recommendation to create a city-led broadband committee to review all city projects related to fiber, did you, have you guys done that?
Can I speak to the first point? If I may, councilmember, speak to the first point, and then I have to defer on the second one, which has to do with a city committee, which, you know, is not within my, my scope. On the first point, I really hope that nothing I said suggested that I thought the schools weren't cooperating. I have, not at all, that's not, I would have no knowledge of such a thing, and to the contrary...
Yeah, you didn't say it, I did. I know that what happened then, but this is a different time.
I don't know anything about that, but I will say every indication is that the bandwidth, the broadband to the Baltimore City Schools is, you know, well-done, and I, so there's nothing that would concern me from that standpoint, as long as that's clear. But thank you for the suggestion, and I'll make sure that I reach out personally.
And Councilman, the second part of your question was?
Yeah, there was another recommendation, the councilman talked about one already, but there was a recommendation from the Smart Cities Task Force. Director, have you have a chance to, did you review the entire?
I reviewed every plan that was ever done that's technology-related in the history of the city. And just to make sure that I have a chance to address that point, you know, we talk about the need for more smart city capability in our current digital transformation plan, but it's more of an aspirational point of view, just like this, a lot more detail required. Most of the plans that I have read and reviewed call for the need to do something, but are short on very specifically, how do we go about doing that?
Yep.
And some of them are dated. Will we thoughtfully consider all those things in an updated, refreshed Smart City Plan? By the way, we do have a Smart City Council that's up and running of city and community...
To ours?
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Sorry, Smart City Council. Sorry. People who are collaborating on the how part, from in and around the community, business leaders, city agency leads, on what does it mean to be a smart city and how do we go about doing that, we're actually in the throes of the next level of detail. Everything else that was published and vetted beforehand will absolutely be thoughtfully considered in that plan.
Thank you.
Sorry for the, no pun intended there, my apologies.
Thank you so much.
Some of us think that the Smart City Council was installed in 2016.
I second that.
Thanks, there. Vice Chair Clark?
Well, that's, it's hard to follow the Smart City Council comments, because I'd just like to ask you, not a technical question, and I don't know whom I'm asking, but when you're doing this plan that's going to be unveiled in the spring, are you, will we... you're doing this plan that's going to be unveiled in the spring, are you, will we have a, an outreach measurement that is built in so that we can actually assess how we're doing at reaching the public of the city of Baltimore, especially those without access now? Will there be, are you using a measurement of households reached, for example, and location of those households when you're doing a plan? I'm not going to get down into the conduits here, I leave that to Mr. Braxton, he knows all about that. I want to, I'm interested in how fast we get to who, and what, and even, and what goal are you incorporating those kinds of goals in your planning or report that's coming back to the city and the city council?
Yes, absolutely. The plan is designed to be actionable. As Frank said, it's going to include the how, as well as the...
Where?
Where we're trying to get. And it will include specific strategies with potential target numbers of, for example, household served, businesses served, city facilities served, and then it will also include with that the related cost. So, it, the strategies, if implemented, if executed, should be measurable in terms of what the outcome will be. Am I answering the questions?
Got you. Yes, you're answering, you're answering my questions, because that's really the only way we can measure. I could certainly measure. What this is all about is how many people get quote-unquote "connected" through this effort, and how many, on the one hand, and that's where the equity comes in. So, when we look at your, your phased goals in terms of households or schools, or what, whatever it is, that's how we judge, and wait for all of us to be able to judge whether we're making progress or not and moving forward. So, the technology of it is very important, but the outcomes of it are crucial to the city of Baltimore. And when my colleague mentioned schools, I was, it made me remember, and I don't know what report or what hearing or what it was, but it was said by, by people who know, knew what they were talking about, that we were building a loop around the city, and that was a place where schools could then bring fiber out and hook up, if I remember correctly. We have a 21st century school program that my colleague was referencing earlier, and now I'm wondering whether we are incorporating in the cost of those 21st century schools, the hookup with the, with the loop that is already established for that purpose around the city. Do you know?
The schools currently receive services from a private sector entity, not over a city fiber. And to my knowledge, all of the schools are connected, and that is in part because of that E-Rate program that I was describing earlier, that's a very important...
The one that has regulations with it, you mean?
Yeah, it's federal funding.
All right, so basically, however they got it, the school system, the schools in our district are all hooked up to 21st century technology in terms of communication and research.
As far as internet access goes, they have broadband internet access that is...
It comes from some private vendor?
Provided by a private entity and subsidized by the federal government.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to do something out of the ordinary before we get to public testimony, just because Liam Davis has worked incredibly hard on this over the past year. Liam, do you have any questions on behalf of the council president?
I think, I think, I think we're pretty good. I think this has been a great dialogue, and, you know, I'll definitely be following up with the council president in the coming days, and we really appreciate everybody's interest. And thank you to the council members for asking great questions, and thank you to Frank and CTC for coming prepared tonight.
All right, we're going to turn over to public testimony, Mr. Spivak.
Doctor.
Doctor Spivak, I apologize. CIO Spivak.
Thank you. I am Phil Spivak, I live in the city. I started the Baltimore Broadband Coalition, I was the founder of that. And as you said, Councilman Costello, I recently became the CIO at the Children's Hospital at Johns Hopkins. I'm, I've been here many times, and I just want to congratulate the council and the new people that are involved. I think I've been here through four chief technology officers and four consultants, and we've had difficulty moving from ideas to effective actions. And I really like the, what I've heard tonight, and I think the depth of the questions from the council are an excellent sign of understanding of the issues. I just want to make four quick points. I want to first connect the issue to people. We talked about technology, but we really have to understand, the Baltimore Broadband Coalition started because, well, it started because I was dissatisfied with my connectivity, and I complained, and we quickly had 1,200 people who were members of the coalition. And we put out a survey, and you don't find many surveys that have these kind of results. We found 96 percent of the ones who responded were either dissatisfied or highly dissatisfied. And they were dissatisfied for cost, performance, and the lack of competition. So, I think as we talk about this, we need to connect it to the people, that people are really unhappy with the current state. Now, there's certainly other important issues in the city, which I recognize, but they're all actually connected to broadband. The second point I want to make is, a number of the questions, I won't, I won't repeat the answer, pointed out, why is this an important issue? I mean, digital equity, connection to public safety, education, economic growth. I want to add one more perspective, as, as I became a mister and then a doctor, as you introduced me, I'm a doctor at Johns Hopkins. And here's another aspect to consider as you talk about this issue, is healthcare has changed. The relationship of the doctor and the patient is completely different now, that should be completely different. The patient participates in their care. And we, and I'm here as an individual, I'm not representing Johns Hopkins, but as we roll out things where we need to connect to patients and to kids, we can't do it, because we don't have adequate connectivity. So, this is, this is really important in terms of this whole issue of healthcare. The next thing is goal. I think that the reason we're here through four consultants and four chief technology officers is, I think at times, the discussion has lost the focus of what should be the goal, and has also confused certain, the technology has confused some people. The goal, I think, should be importantly, start with what we're doing this for, but it's to get fiber to everyone's home and to everyone's business. And I think sometimes people get confused between cable and fiber, and we certainly are scared by the cost, because it can be expensive, and we have to be smart how we do this. But we have to remember that no matter what technology we're going to be using tomorrow or in five years, we still need that, so it's wise. And I've seen Roland Avenue dug up twice, and we didn't implement a dig-one policy with that. And I know that there's fiber to the school that wasn't completely incorporated into the plan, so we have to, we have to be mindful of these technical issues. The other thing that I think confuses people is the 5G. The 5G, do we need fiber? We need fiber. In fact, you need fiber to run 5G. We have to think of 5G as one of the technologies that we will use, but it's not a choice between fiber and 5G. It's that we need, we need fiber, and then we will also need 5G, but it's not that we're going to give up the cost of fiber by going to 5G. The other important issue is whether it's municipal broadband and open access. That's critical. Faster broadband is good, but what people are dissatisfied with is they want choice, and I don't, and all of our members, that we don't want to be forced to have one provider, we want an open access network that we can pick our ISP. My last point is, what I started with is, is that we really need to move from words to actions. I can tell you that I know we don't have a dig-one policy. I know that we don't use some technologies like microtrenching where we could. I know that in some of our zoning hearings, we haven't completely incorporated the whole issue of broadband in it. So, what will it take to move from actions, from words to actions? I think the most important thing is, is going to take leadership from the council and from the mayor. And I think, I've come away from these hearings before, thinking that we're finally going in the right direction. I feel that way right now, I'm really excited about things. But we do have to have things that we measure and that we make people accountable. I, as an example, asked for the broadband connectivity of the schools a year ago. It's very difficult to get that as a resident in the city. So, ask for transparencies, ask for metrics, ask for things that you will know as a council, whether this is working for, working or not. And then I think, don't get snowed by the technology. You may have broadband to the wall of the Roland Park Elementary School, or to the schools and other parts of the city, but that doesn't mean that the connectivity is good to the kid inside the wall. So, think inclusively as you think about the people that are using the technology. Well, thank you, and I really, having been here four times, this council hearing is the one I'm most optimistic that we're going in the right direction. I really thank the leadership and the people that are behind the issue right now.
Thank you, Dr. Spivak. Adam Bumad, did I say that correctly?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for, I guess, giving me an opportunity to speak here. I guess there are two things that I wanted to talk about, one being net neutrality and also municipal broadband. So, yeah, thank you again. So, I guess I'll start off, so Baltimore suffers from a lack of internet access. 74,000 homes are roughly a third of the population without the thing that sort of defines the backbone of the internet today. And that's actually per the Deutsch Foundation's report, Digital Equity Report back in 2017. So, as we continue the sort of multi-pronged effort to provide access to these homes, I think we must also ensure that the people also sort of have access to services online, and it's not necessarily the companies that they pay to get online that control what websites, what applications they have access to. I think that is also a very important front that we should be focusing on as well. So, just last year, the FCC revoked the 2015 net neutrality protections, and I guess I'll give a little background as to why that's important. And first, I'll provide precedent. So, back in 2014, Comcast infamously held a popular streaming startup at the time, Netflix, for ransom throttling its service, that was in direct competition with Comcast, Xfinity. This was a way for that provider, specifically that ISP, to attempt to stifle innovation in a field it's heavily invested in, which happens to be media. And very similarly, so my family's actually from Morocco, but I've, you know, been born and raised in Baltimore my whole life. So, very similarly, in 2016, Morocco banned calls made through internet connections, so the service called VoIP, protocol called VoIP, taking down popular apps like Skype and WhatsApp. So, after outrage on social media, that service was later reinstated. I guess, I just wanted to provide that background, because the 2015 net neutrality protections, those rules enacted by the FCC at the time, provided three simple tenants: no blocking, no throttling, and no paid prioritization. Those rules would have prevented those things from actually happening, those specific precedents. Internet access is classified as a human right per the United Nations, and I think we must be wary of the potential effects of the lack of reliable access in our communities. And I think that goes back to what, what you stated earlier. I mean, having, you know, been in Baltimore City schools and things like that as a kid, like, yeah, it's, it's very demoralizing to have one specific area that you can get access to, and when you go home, that, that access is not there. Think about what impact that has on education, think about what impact that has on financial outcomes, economic outcomes, things, things of that nature. So, so along that, that note, I guess, I mentioned sort of reliable access in our communities, but I think a few other words that I should mention are free, open, and accessible. All tenants of an open internet. So, I highly recommend the council to investigate SB 8.22, which is actually the first state-level law that restores all of the 2015 net neutrality protections, including the banning of ISPs from blocking, throttling, and charging websites fees for access to these, access to ISP subscribers. And this was actually, SB 8.22 was enacted by California back in September, I believe, of 2018. The first state to actually implement that, that rule and reinstate that at the state level. I guess also, I'll mention, the city claims that it wants competition, and that it wants, it wants to breed sort of, you know, internet companies starting here, tech hubs, things of that nature. But I think, however, previous moves with regards to the Comcast 2016 franchise agreement renewal shows otherwise, preventing other major ISPs like Verizon, for instance, to move into the city and to provide competition. I definitely think that's unacceptable, and that's very monopoly-like behavior. It sort of breeds that sort of mindset. So, I guess I have a few more things. In order for this effort of establishing net neutrality rules, as well as building out and providing municipal broadband to be successful, I would urge the city council to consider alternatives such as community networks. That's something that I help a lot out with in other states, such as New York City. So, New York City, there's a group called NYC Mesh, that, that is actually building out a mesh network, so think of it as just like a bunch of routers sort of combined together to provide community wireless access that is free and open. And it's sort of like building equity in those communities, because they are the very people that are also implementing that infrastructure. And, yeah, in New York City, very similar problem with regards to internet access, where a fourth of the population does not have access. In Detroit, there's, there's a group called the, the name slips me, sorry. But very similarly, half the population lacks internet access as well in Detroit. And there is also a group there that, the Digital Equitable Initiative is the name. They're, they're also helping build out very similar community networks. I think, last thing, providing lines to businesses and not just consumers at the municipal level, because for the city, I think to receive, to see a return on its investment, I would highly recommend they take the route of California and Tennessee, not only providing lines to, to the consumer, but also to businesses as well. So, yeah, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who wish to testify? Going once, going twice. Frank, I think what we'd like to do is, you mentioned that that plan is going to be released in the spring.
Sometime in the spring.
Do we have a guesstimate in terms of month, or?
I'm sorry, I don't. I'm sorry I don't yet, just because the data collection process sometimes goes fast and sometimes goes slowly, but I can get an update to BCT as quickly as possible.
Okay. Yeah, Frank, if you could share that with the committee, you can just email that to me, and I'll make sure I distribute it to everyone. I think what we're going to do...
Mr. Chair, may I ask one question of Director Johnson, and then one other of DOT? As we approach, I guess, the completion of the study, I noticed in two of the testimonies that the, the issue of open access was brought up. Will that be the recommendation coming from the city as we look at the study?
Go ahead, join.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You're talking about one dig policy, is that?
No, 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 I'm talking about open access.
Open access, I'm assuming you mean by open access is free, free and available where it's available.
Council, sometimes open access is used in different ways, and it has different technological meanings, but generally, it's understood within the industry to mean that if there is an infrastructure available, that infrastructure is available to multiple competing providers, so as to maximize competition. And that is absolutely, one of the key goals here, is to enable private sector competition and private sector opportunity. There are different ways of enabling... There are different ways of enabling open access, different forms of open access, and different layers of the communications model, and we are looking at all of that as we're doing the planning and design, with an eye toward what is most economically feasible and viable for the city of Baltimore, because all of these things have costs, and we want to make recommendations that are actionable, and not just, well, well, very viable, but they, all of them are underpinned by the need for openness, competition, ideally for multiple entities to have opportunity, and certainly, that all private entities would have the same opportunity to work with the city toward these outcomes as any other.
Okay. Yeah, and I just want to be, I wasn't talking about free, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
My second question is, I'm just curious, currently, if, if anyone knows, is broadband a part of our site, site plan review? It, it, does, does--
I'm reasonably certain that we, we don't, we don't do site plan reviews on broadband.
No, no, no. Well, I'm talking about our site plan review process, where we review any project, is broadband a part of that, that review process?
I've never heard of it being part of that process. I mean, maybe we're doing it, but I've never heard about it, and usually I would hear about something like that.
That's a shame. It, it should be a part of any development process. And, and once again, you know, I'm, I'm not just pulling this from thin air, this, these come from goals and strategies that were developed four years ago.
Councilmember, let me, let me take that up with planning, and we'll see, and see where we can go with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Clark.
Well, that's a very interesting point. And I, yeah. I mean, basically, we could build it into the development process in a minute, well, in a short period of time, and then if you, if you're digging, and we're, and we're needing, then you got to dig that hole. It's, I mean, am I making this up? I mean, how, you, it's a con, you, you put the conduit down, right? But that was not the question I was going to ask. The question I was planning to, but it's a good, it's something we can do as part of just site plan review and site plan development. And we probably should have already been doing it. When you're doing this plan, and, and we've sat through the meetings, and, and so has Bill Cole when he was a member of this council, when providers just didn't want to come here. Now, we were getting blamed for not inviting them, well, we were begging them, and they weren't coming. They, different kinds of providers, but all the same kind of idea. So when you're doing this plan, who owns the system?
Let me take Craig at that.
In the plan you're planning. Do we?
We are working with strategies for what the city can do with its existing assets and expanding its assets to improve broadband outcomes here. So we're, we're working primarily with the prospect of city ownership of certain assets, and how those assets can then incent, catalyze, and so on, private sector investment, hopefully, and operations. I can't answer authoritatively until I'm done doing the analysis, and I'm deep in it now, so I'm not there yet. But I, I very much agree with what you say, councilmember. I think, you know, there's frequently the sense out there is, is that if just, if cities just asked more nicely, or if they changed their processes or policies, the industry would come and build all kinds of infrastructure.
It's not true.
It's not how it works.
They will not.
Infrastructure is infrastructure, the economics of infrastructure are very challenging, and private dollars go to where the return is greatest.
Right.
Even when they go to a particular city, they don't go everywhere in that city.
Correct.
And some of our most prosperous cities are struggling with that now, because they're seeing deployment in some neighborhoods, but not in others.
Correct.
So I, I hear you entirely. That is why there is such an important public role, that is why we're having this conversation. There is a need for cities to be involved to achieve equitable outcomes, and to achieve purposeful outcomes, and it's not just going to happen by asking the private sector to do it. In my experience, just about everywhere in this country, and observing projects internationally and participating in some of them, where the public sector is prudently and thoughtfully involved, the outcomes are better.
Well, let me, let me just say this. My experience, and it's limited with all this, is that we have the infrastructure without which it can't be done. We, the city of Baltimore, we, the people of Baltimore, have the infrastructure, citywide, with all its gaps, and all its faults, and all its needs to be upgraded, blah, blah. How do we, in a plan, make ourselves, and what we bring to the table, so attractive that vendors come to us instead of the vice versa we have experienced in this field? How, what's the, what's the economic strategy of assetting that we should be employing here in Baltimore to reverse the usual, please come, and, and we'll, you know, yes, there are some providers in different fields of technology that will give us, you know, give the city of Baltimore trade back some free access and things like that for the use of the infrastructure. But by and large, we're in a begging situation with regard to what we're talking about right now, that's for sure. How do we, as part of our strategy, make ourselves and what we do have a real magnet to attract? I would like to see that as part of the plan, instead of just saying, this is sure going to cost a lot of money, and we hope maybe somebody will help. I, I'm not asking for it now, but I'm asking that you, you put it in the plan.
I am spending a good amount of my time working with my team, thinking through how the city can leverage its existing assets to try to increase private sector broadband investment in the city of Baltimore. At the same time, I also, you know, want to say that the, this is not, there is not a magic formula out there for how to change investment calculus so dramatically that it will transform how the private sector thinks about where it's going to send its, its broadband dollars. But what we are trying to do is to make Baltimore a place where, all other things being equal, the presence of these assets and smart, thoughtful policies will lead companies to say, that's a place where I want to go and invest and deliver services. And in that way, we can hopefully move the needle over some period of time to improve broadband outcomes in the city.
Well, I'm glad that you're thinking about it, and all I can say is that if we can, if people can invent the technology that we're sitting here trying to figure out, or I am, then there must be people that could be smart enough also to, and, to figure out the economics in the direction of the public sector. And I'm sure if anyone is, that you are, I'm not dismissing in any way. I didn't mean it that way. I just mean, put it in the plan, so we can see what we might be able to do, or the best case that we might be able to do, instead of begging, which we've done enough of, and we don't really want to do anymore.
Neither do we. We agree.
Can Dr.?
Please.
Thank you.
In the, the broadband coalition, we actually had companies come, private companies come, and show interest in putting fiber into the areas where we live. Now, these are high-income areas, so they saw a return on investment.
Correct.
In spite of that, they expressed reticence to get involved, and the issues that were brought up, I think, are things that you can do something about. They spoke of, at that time, unclear city policies. They wanted to know the rules. They didn't want to step in with investment and find that the rules changed. They wanted to reduce uncertainty, and I haven't been involved with this issue as much in the last year or two, but there was uncertainty about the conduit, there was uncertainty about where it was, but also its condition and its capacity. And before making a major investment, they wanted that uncertainty removed. And then the third was that there was inconsistent leadership, and that's why I spoke to that earlier. They saw the changes in leadership and, and technology officers and consultants, and if you have another community with those risks removed, they're going there, they're not coming to Baltimore. So I think, if we can address those specific things, it will help. I completely agree with Ms. Clovis's point, though. The fourth thing that's critical is, there has to be adequate capital investment from the city, or they won't come. Or if they come, they'll cherry pick the communities, and they'll only come to the high-income communities, and they'll ignore the rest of the city, which we don't want.
Well, I don't think we should permit.
Right.
That's one thing that we can do. Zone them out if they won't be equitable. I think, can I, may I just say, Mr. Chairman, I think those are wise words, and we hear those, those kinds of sentiments about a lot of investments, about policies, about bureaucracy, about stability of, of health, in other words, stability of the way that the, the game is played, the rules of the transactions, over some kind of rational period of time, so that people can figure it out to their, and they're going to figure it out to their advantage if we, but if we've already figured it out to ours, and, and give them that certainty, stability, and steadiness, that goes a long way. But we should certainly incorporate a, a way, and we have that ability, I believe, to say, don't, it's not a cherry picking expedition. It cannot be a cherry picking expedition. There has to be a quid and a quo, and we, here's how we will measure them. Here's how we'll measure those quids and those quos. And that, and that's a stable, and we all come to some conclusion about that. I mean, if that's fair enough. I'm putting it in, in technical language, but I think you understand what I'm saying. I think we need to do that. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Frank, what I think we'd like to do is, I'm going to speak with Liam, the council president, about this, once that, if you can get us a timeframe on when that report is going to be released.
Yes, sir.
And then we'd like to schedule a follow-up hearing to have you and the consultant present on that report.
Yep.
And ask questions, and go from there.
We also owe you a map of the current fiber assets in the city. It was a request earlier.
Yes, please. Okay. Thank you all very much for attending. We are now in recess.
Thank you very much.